Hi, I'm Leonard Davis and I am interviewing Nancy Gardner, who is an iconic, almost a historical landmark in Newport Beach, I would say.
Well, that makes me sound really ancient, but go ahead.
Anyway, well, okay, I'm sorry. Your house, I meant to say, was historic.
Ah, okay.
Okay. So Nancy, we're gonna start from the beginning. Were you born in Newport Beach? And so you grew up because your dad was a judge, I believe.
Right. Yeah. My father arrived here in 1920 and then when he married, they lived on the peninsula for a while and then moved to Babo Island. So that's what I remember. My first memories are of the little island in Babo Island.
So was it Little Island then that you lived on?
Well, we lived on both. We lived on Little Island for a while. We had a house, which I only remember very vaguely, but it was, looking at the photos, it was not atypical house at the time with, it was just basically an apartment over a garage with a huge front yard of sand. And so, and then it was right on the water. The beach was right across the seawall, the bay. And you look out and you could see the horses from Mr. Harris's stables, which is where Irvine Terrace is now, from across the bay. And apparently, I was crazy about horses from the time I was born. And my father had made, who was not handy, had made this little pen for me, like a playpen, on the sand of our yard. And my mother had looked out to check on me. She was upstairs in the kitchen. And I wasn't there. So she comes running down and she sees in the water this little nose. Basically, that's all she could see. I was swimming across the sea of horses, except at one and a half or two hours old I was, I didn't know how to swim. So fortunately, she found me, or else I wouldn't be here telling this story.
And you were two at the time, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
So, and so obviously you lived on the side of the island, living, looking towards the land then, okay.
Right. And then we moved to Babo Island proper. And we lived right off Sapphire, again, on the water.
Only place to live in Newport, I think. So, I grew up with sand in my backyard, which don't have anymore.
Nope.
Okay. So then, so you went to Newport Harbor, I assume?
I went to Cronomar Elementary, which isn't there anymore. And then Horace Ensign, and then Harbor, because there was no Cronomar High School in those days. My sister was in the first class there.
In 1930, huh?
Huh?
In 1930 or '32 or something like that, your sister?
No, and she was in the first class at Cronomar High School.
Oh, Cronomar High School?
Yeah, there was no Cronomar High School in those days.
Okay, alright. So you went to Harbor, so?
Yep.
Okay. So you probably went there when my sister, what year did you graduate?
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. Because that's, I had siblings that were kinda there a couple of years before that. Alright, so then from there on, then you went to college somewhere, I suppose?
I went to college. I went to Santa Barbara, didn't like it, went to coast for a semester, then I went to UCLA, went to SC where I graduated, then I did graduate work at UCI with stops at the University of Guadalajara and Fairleigh Dickinson, I lived in New Jersey. So I've been all around.
Okay. Well, I've been to two of those at least. So, okay. And then, did you, you didn't stay in Newport after you graduated?
No.
So, where did you go then?
So, I, not, again, not atypical people of my age. We married right out of college and we lived in LA because I was finishing my teaching credential and my husband was working as a stockbroker. And we lived in LA for a few years, then we went east and we lived in New Jersey for a few years. And then we came back. We were divorced, came back. I lived in Irvine for a number of years. And then we moved back home, finally.
Okay. So, and you said you moved in this house in '84?
Yeah, it was in the early eighties, I think.
Is that when you moved to Newport, or did you live in another house?
No, we moved back here, right, yeah, to here, mine.
You and your husband?
My father had a friend, Mr. Boyd, who was a real estate agent. And he said, "I've got a property that's not on the market yet. I think it's a good deal." And in today's terms, if I had bought more things that appreciated this way, Jeff Bezos and I would be shaking hands or something. I mean, it was a very good buy.
Too bad, we all didn't do that.
Yeah, exactly.
You had a good buy, so, okay. And then, at some point, you started getting involved in city affairs and things, or social affairs around here?
Yeah. Well, actually, sort of, I was sitting, it was when we were living in Irvine, sort of, I had an idea in my head. I was sitting there watching television and there was a PSA, which had this great reggae beat and this guy just riding this fabulous wave on his board. And it was Surf Rider. Surf Rider was very new in those days. And I was intrigued because it was about the environment, it was about surfing, both of which I cared about. I'd gotten involved in environmental things back in New Jersey. And so eventually, when we moved down here, I ran into a fellow, Matt Gaddow, and he was also into the Surf Rider. And so we started the Surf Rider chapter.
Was that a TV series they had, or something, or?
What?
The Surf Rider, that's a magazine?
No, that's an organization, Surf Rider Foundation.
Okay, okay, Surf Rider Foundation.
And so we started the Newport Beach chapter. Particularly, we were concerned because this was the, when they were just starting the golf course, Pelican Hills. And the people that surfed at Reef Point, which used to be Scotchman's Cove, were noticing a lot of runoff, which they'd never seen before. And I had had a horse there. Two friends, Anne Roaring and Kristen Neal and I, had started what we called the pasture. We were the first to have a horse there. And so I had, for ten years or so, I'd ridden there practically every day. So I knew that area just like the back of my hand. And I could say, anecdotally, you know, I had no scientific proof, but I could say, no, there was no water there. There was a seep that made the little bit of greenery right on the hillside, but it never touched the sand. So we took on the Irvine Company. So, you've seen the cartoon Bambi Meets Godzilla, you know, sort of like that. They could've smashed us, but they're smart enough to know that there are other ways around things. And so, we got them to have a meeting, a large meeting, with officials from the county and this sort of thing, and talking about this issue of runoff. And they were like, "No, there is no runoff." "Well, what is that we see?" "Well, it's not from us." Because water is the most expensive thing in a golf course's, excuse me, budget. We didn't let water runoff. In fact, we're gonna show you how water sensitive we are. So they took us, one day, I'll never forget this, it was so weird, put in a golf cart, and we're starting to go around the area. And they're telling all these things. And meanwhile, along the gutter, is this torrent of water. This is how, hello? But that somehow didn't exist. Well, what happened then was, we tried to get the city, because this is when the EIRs were starting to come for the development of Newport Coast proper. And our chapter said to the city, "Runoff from this development is going to impact our beaches and other things. Please, when you're looking at the EIR, when you're making your comments, please address this." The city had one comment on that first EIR, which was, "Be sure your streets are wide enough for our fire engines." And I can remember going up to the planning commission at the county, because everything was being done through the county, and addressing the EIR and saying, "Look, you have said that because of what you've planned here, there can be no increase above 10% of runoff. The Irvine Company's own document says there's going to be more runoff." And their, the guy's name was Hassan Nury, their water guy, said, "Oh, well, yes, but, you know, we have all these mitigations, so it's not important." And again, that was that. And a few years later, you had water coming more than they'd ever seen. Buck Gully, Little Corona in those days, you would get water during the winter sometimes during a storm, but otherwise, there was no. Well, now there's, there was a, Buck Gully had become not a dry canyon, but a creek that ran all the time. Water across Little Corona, basically destroying the beach. Morning Canyon and that sort of thing. So, we just kept plugging along, working on water quality and runoff issues. And that was really my first involvement with the city, because after a little bit, I went, "We don't know enough. We don't know enough how everything works. It's one thing to be standing here, you know, standing on a bridge, holding up your sign or something, but there gotta be better ways." And so, I got involved with the city with the Water Quality Committee and began to see how things worked. And we had an alliance. I think we were fairly forward-thinking. Instead of, you know, "We could be out on the outside protesting. We don't have a lot of money, so we're probably not gonna get very far." Or we can try to make some partnerships. So we put on the Run for Clean Water with the city for three years to, because, I should back, when the county went bankrupt, they cut all their water quality programs and everything had anything to do with that. So we went to the city, said, "Let's put on a 5K." As 5Ks, as you know, 5Ks make good money if they're done right. And we'll split. We'll both work hard and then we'll split the proceeds. And so we made, I think we were gonna make like $50,000, which was not bad. And that 25 to the city to start doing things, 25 to us to do our programs. And that was just, I think was good for both sides. We said, "Hey, we can work together and accomplish a lot more and not always be in opposition to each other." And so that, I was doing a lot of that. And then when the general plan came up, as far as that, I thought, "Well, I'd like to be on that. I'd like to be sure that we're being sensitive to the environment and everything." So I put my name in and was selected. And then, the second year, Bob Shelton retired as chair and I became the co-chair of that. And that was a four-and-a-half-year process. And I became very familiar with lots of things in the city I hadn't known before. And got very involved and was very involved in the campaign to get that general plan passed. And meanwhile, there had been an election. And in fact, I think Bernie Solstad had run in it. And the person who was elected, I can remember the first time I went to a council meeting that he was there, our representative from Cronomar, and just went, "Oh my. This is, and this is not a question of his personal intelligence or integrity or anything. It was just, this is, you know, the proverbial round peg in the square hole." It was just, and so for the next few years, I kept saying to people, "Well, are you gonna run against him?" People that I thought were likely to be involved politically, where I had just been involved in sort of a different level, politically. And like, "No, no." They didn't want to run against an incumbent. And then Debbie Allen and Jan DeBaye came to me, took me out to coffee one day.
So you were on the council at this time, or?
No. Yeah, I was just trying to get people to run. And they took me out for coffee and said, "Will you run for council against this individual?" I didn't wanna run a campaign. How awful would that be? And I, and I said, "Well, you know, I'm not a sociable person. I mean, I don't mind going to meetings and everything, but all the other stuff, yeah." "Oh, no, no." I remember Debbie said, she still laughs about this. "Oh, there's nothing, oh, you don't have to do any of that." So I came home and every night, my husband and I have a routine. I cook, he cleans up. While I'm cooking, we have our glass of wine. You know, these people, these women made this suggestion to me, but I, and he looked at me and he said, "You go to all the meetings, why don't you have a vote?" I went, "Oh, oh." So we did, it was a homespun campaign, very different than what is nowadays. I was fortunate that my opponent didn't have a lot of money himself. So we didn't have to spend a lot of money. It was not negative at all. Just, I ran, of course, I ran a lot on my father's name, every other word. My father, Judge Gardner, because he was very popular, very well-liked, although deceased by that time. And won. And that was how the council thing came apart. Sort of, it started with Surf Rider, went through the general plan, and then the council.
And so how many terms were you on the council?
My, two terms. We have term limits in Newport Beach.
And what year was that that you got elected? Do you remember? Was it '83?
No, no, no. It was '06.
Oh, 2006, okay. So until 2012 then, okay. While you were on the city council those years, what issues came up that you remember that, maybe three that were really?
Yeah, so I think one of the big ones was banning ranch.
Okay.
That was...
I know that well.
Yeah. And that was a case, at that time, remember, there was no money. The city, we had, our general plan had said, "There are two possibilities. The preferred possibility is open space, but if money can't be raised to purchase it, it will be development and planned for that as well." And there was no money. We had had an informal appraisal done, which came up with $200 million as the value, which was developed. And I came from it. I think it was everybody was expecting me to be, "Oh, we've gotta do open space, open space." And I had always been, from the, long before I was even on council. You have 400 and some acres of oil fields, basically. And some of it can't be developed at all, because it's wetland, so that's okay. And if it's $200 million, do I wanna spend $200 million of public funds on this oil field when the developer is going to give me 80% of it anyway, plus the money, an endowment, to maintain it? Or would I rather take that $200 million and save maybe the Gaviota Coast part of it? Or the Mojave areas, which are sensitive and have sensitive species and everything? And for me, that was a no-brainer. Take the, and it was verified by, we had hired someone to go out and find the money. And he went to the Nature Conservancy, the Packard Foundation, you know, all the players. And he went to four of them and they all four said the same thing. "You've got a developer who's willing to give you 80% of it. Take the money and run." So I felt validated in my position that these very strong environmental organizations were saying, "Hey, yeah, let's save that money for something else." So, we developed a plan that had housing, it had a small hotel, it was gonna provide some stuff for affordable. And it was going to be this huge environmental cleanup, because cleaning up an oil field is not simple. And so that was, there was very, very divisive. There were those who said, and the campaign was easy. Save banning ranch. That's so easy. But they don't talk about, well, pay for banning ranch, you know, all the other things. So, we passed it as a council. And then went to the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Commission went, "No, we don't like what you did, basically. We don't think you followed all the things you should do." And so they pushed it back and said, "This area can't be developed." So it came to be about, maybe, instead of 20% that they were gonna develop, they were gonna be able to develop maybe 5 or 10%. And it just went into the quiet period. Of course, now they've got some money and it may end up being open space, which is great. I certainly would hope it was open space, but as I say, to me, it wasn't worth the money to save that extra 20% when we could've had the 80% for free. So that was a big issue. Another issue, which was just, to me, one of those things where you just, you realize that you're just out of step with some of your fellow residents and others, was the fire rings. I had been approached during the, when I was first running for election by...
This is the ones in Corona Del Mar?
Yeah, well, throughout Newport.
Okay.
By someone who lived in China Cove and was disturbed by the smoke. And sort of said in a not-too-subtle way that, "If I promised to get rid of the fire rings, he would bring a lot of clout to my campaign." And I thought, "Well, I can't make that promise." So that was, and that sort of turned me off of the whole thing. I was like, "Hey, you live there. The fire rings were there before you bought your house. Smoke." So I, but then, we were going over a budget issue and our Public Works, no, I guess, General Service Director was saying something about, it was like, I forget how much, but like the $50,000 or more that they kept having to do with these fire rings, because they, and I, I was not a fan of the fire rings. I mean, when I had gone to meetings, I'd gone, been to things where the fire rings, and you'd be in your bare feet and you'd be finding coat hangers under the ground. And when I would go down to the big corner to run, I'd see broken glass there and everything. So I didn't think that they were really a great asset, but, I must say, I had stayed back because I just, I didn't care. I didn't want to be pressured into anything. But when the dental services, I said, "Well, then why don't we just get rid of them?" And then it became even more interesting, because it was right then that the AQMD, the Air Quality Group, came out with its thing, ruling that said that smoke, the particles in smoke were carcinogens. And they began to restrict the use of fireplaces. "No, no more wood fireplaces." There were times when you, if you even had a wood fireplace, you couldn't use them or anything. And that, for me, changed it. All of a sudden, we're looking at our residents who live down there, "You don't like the smell of smoke? Hey, too bad. The smoke is impacting your health? That's a whole nother issue to me." So that was, along with the fact that we're spending all this money to try to keep these fire rings clean and functioning, again, you know, "Let's get rid of them." Well, even though I had grown up here, I'd never used the fire rings. So they meant nothing to me. I had no emotional attachment. You know, I went to the beach during the day and surfed and then I went home. Well, I didn't realize the emotional thing that everybody, it was like, "Oh, we have to have the fire rings. They're just, you know, they're part of rites of passage or this and that." And it got to be a fight between the AQMD and the Coastal Commission. It was like, "Oh, yes, they're just very much a part of the whole beach experience. You have to keep them."
So Coastal Commission was in favor of keeping them?
They wanted to keep them. And the AQMD wanted us to get rid of them. And I'm saying, I'm sorry I brought this subject up, because we're caught between two agencies, which happens not irregularly. And you just go, "Hey, guys, don't ask us to settle this. We don't know, we can't please both of you. You guys get together, you come up with a plan and you present it to us and we'll do it." And in a sense, that sort of happened. But we kept the rings, but we spaced them more, we did certain things. We tried to use certain kinds of fuel and everything. So that was, I just remember that, because it was, it just, that one for me came out of left field. But it was very, I mean, I was told, I remember getting nasty emails that what I was trying to do was keep people off the beach. I didn't like the people from inland. And I was like, "I just spent 20 years with Surf Rider, fighting for access for everybody to the beach. How can you say that?" Well, you know, they're only getting that part of it. So that was their feeling.
So what's your third big issue? And that's all I'll ask of person.
No, I think that the third issue that we took on was probably quieter, but...
The what?
Quieter. But just as important, in a sense, in that we really started looking in a way that previous councils hadn't looked at our whole, not from just a budget point of view, but looking at, do we have too many people? Are we functioning as efficiently as we can? We didn't want to cut services. We didn't, we know Newport Beach wants its, you know, streets paved and wants its parks nicely maintained and everything. But have we become a little lazy in this? Have we become just used to paying all this? And we were certainly helped by the city manager at the time, Dave Kiff. He was very much, even as an employee, he wanted to take a fresh look at that. And we ended up, over a period of time, reorganizing a number, not a number, several of the departments to make them more efficient. We had, one of the big things was, we wanna make this more user-friendly. Because you know, any sort of group, entity, agency, whatever, you can become so complacent that you become, almost you work against yourself. And we found residents were often complaining if they had to get a permit or something. Sometimes some of the, it was just Byzantine practically. Clean that up. Let's, they're our customers. We are, you know, think almost like a retail organization. How do you, how do you perform better? And that's when we set up the new desk at the, where you get your permits and planning and stuff, and made it much more friendly for people who came in. Because it's one thing for the contractors, I mean, they all know the way around. But here I am, I know nothing. And I wanna add a room on, or I wanna put on a deck or something. And I don't know where to start. Well, let's make it as easy for that kind of person as possible. So, we made, we shrank the workforce. We offered buyouts to a number of people. We, that was a big issue. We sort of privatized the waste collection.
Yeah, I remember that.
And that was, I mean, everybody's like, "Oh, I love my trash man." "Do you? I never see mine." But that we promised that they would have as good a service. And I think we lived up to that. And we also cleaned up our alleys in the process. We now have, I mean, it used to have, every kind of thing was out there. And now we have the same kind of trash cans and everything. And I know, for me, I'm about as unanal as you can get. Sort of a slob in many ways. But for a lot of people, that really made a difference. They could look at their alleys and say, "Oh, they look so nice now with all those things." So, I think that reorganization of city government was something that we can be very proud of, those of us who were on the council at the time.
So after retiring from the city council, what do you think are your accomplishments now? Are you just gonna kick back and?
No. I have continued to be active. I continue to attend, for example, the Water Quality Committee meetings. I, when we did our visioning process, we started a visioning process for the general plan and I was chair of that committee. I am on the Orange Coast River Park Conservancy Board. The Orange Coast River Park is that area along the San Ana River. A lot of open space there, but different owners and everything. And we try to help them coordinate and facilitate their processes. And the Natural Communities Coalition Board, which is the organization that oversees all of that open space behind Newport Coast, Laguna Canyon, up into Orange.
Natural Communities?
Communities, yeah.
Natural, okay.
Natural Communities Coalition.
Coalition.
Was on the board of the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter for a period. So I stay busy. I write a column for the, for Stu News. Do a little program for NBTV on the environment in Newport Beach, The Village Green.
So, I guess if you didn't go to meetings, you'd be bored, huh?
Yeah.
So, well, okay. What do you think Newport, do you have a vision for the future for Newport Beach? Or a couple of things that you think the city in the future should really seriously address?
Well, I think it's hard for people who lived here when I did. If you lived here in the '50s, you lived here in Eden. And this, you know, it's paradise, lost for us. So, it's hard for me, looking at this huge house next to me, which is pretty ugly. And the huge house that they're building across the street, which is even uglier. It's like we have an ugly city, ugly house contest in the place. It's, it's hard for me.
You prefer the little cottages.
Yeah, I mean, they fit. They fit the little lots.
Yeah.
I'm concerned, I have, having dealt on the council with some of our presidents who have a sense of entitlement, to say the least, it concerns me that we're gonna have nothing but really rich people living here. Because, I mean, I couldn't live here now. I couldn't afford the property taxes if I bought now. So to afford just the property tax, you know, it's one thing to buy the house, but to pay the property taxes, you gotta have pretty good income. So, I would like to see us try to preserve what open space we can, to try to take better care of our beaches, in terms of, not in terms of grooming them. We groom them beautifully. But if I had one thing, I would say, I would like to see the city pay more attention to the future in terms of the environment. We have done, I know we're talking about Babo Island, the seawalls as far as the sea level rise, but we're not paying any attention to our ocean face and beaches. And they're gonna be lost. You know, if we don't start planning now, we're just gonna have a seawall. And that's, that, seawalls mean no beach, no sandy beach and everything. So I would like to, I would hope that we would pay much more attention to that sort of thing in the future, not wait, you know, till the tides are lapping at our houses and everything. I mean, for me, oh, great. I now have waterfront property.
Yeah, right there, you can put a marina in there.
Exactly. But that's not what I wish for. I wish for my grandchildren and their children to be able to enjoy the same beaches I did, to be able to surf.
Okay, talk about your dad, Judge Gardner. What can you say about him and any good stories?
Oh, my father lived 93 years and I, every day was a story. So, well, best, one of the best stories is his arrival in Newport Beach. His, he and his parents were living in Green River, Wyoming. He was eight years old. And my grandfather was the head of the local union. It was a railroad town. And the union voted to go out and strike, and my grandfather didn't think they were justified, so he scabbed. And there was a lot of bitterness, and finally, there were death threats. And to make the story short, my parents, my grandparents decided that my father shouldn't be have to put up with this. So, they put him on the train, eight years old, all by himself, between Green River, Wyoming and Balboa. He had to change trains, he had to change stations, all by himself. But his older sister, Jessie, and her husband Dick Whitson, lived in Balboa, and that's where he arrived. And when he got here, it was like he'd found his home. He never really left. He lived with Dick and Jessie on and off until he graduated from college. He was always there in the summer, and even after his folks moved back here, they lived in Maywood, he would go with, live with them for the school year, but then come down here.
And his first name was David, right?
No, Bob.
Bob, Robert.
Robert Gardner.
Okay, all right, yeah.
And he became, after he went to law school, he went to SC Law School. He became the city judge. And there was a little, as he will admit, he would admit, nepotism. Dick Whitson, his son, his brother-in-law, was part of the group that ran the city. And when the city judge died, everyone looks and thinks, "We've got this young attorney here. He knows all of us. We'll name him city judge." They didn't quite, for him, I think it was the beginning of his reputation as a surfing judge, because he'd bring his board into court and everything and do that. But I think they thought he was going to be a pushover, because he was so young. And he wasn't. He said that --
How old was he then?
He would have been in his early, late twenties, early thirties.
Okay.
And Frank, he would tell me, Frank Reinhardt, who was the guy who organized everything with companies, said, "Now, Bob, we have a little matter that's going to come up, and I need you to," and I said, "Frank, you know, we have our processes." He said, "The interesting thing was that somehow, the issue never got to him. Whatever it was, it didn't, it got settled before it ever became a court matter." Well, that was his first stint in judicial office. He had a great time in the war. I can remember him, I grew up with war stories, and I thought war was just this big adventure where you drank a lot, because he was the chief press censor for the whole Pacific Theater. He was on Admiral Newman's flagship. Well, so were all the correspondents. You had people like Robert Rourke, who wrote Something of Value later, and St. Clair McElway, who was a big New York writer. And they were all, I mean, writers are notorious as drinkers, and my father liked to drink. And so, all these stories of like, "Oh, yeah, well, meanwhile, you know, the ship next was kamikaze, but we were doing this little adventure, this prank or something."
So, let's see then, so this city judge, this was not Newport, this was up in LA?
No, this is Newport. Newport had a city judge at the time, yeah. And then, then he, so he got back from the war and went into private practice for a bit.
So, he left the judge's position then?
Yeah, so he went into service. And then, he was appointed, the youngest Superior Court Judge in the state, in Santa Ana. And he loved being a judge. I didn't realize, growing up, that there were people who were adults, who went to work every morning with a grimace and couldn't wait to end their careers in some way or another. I mean, he really enjoyed being a judge. He took it seriously, but he also took it with a sense of humor. I've talked to people who were in his court as jurors, and they said, you know, usually you hate to go, you don't want, "Oh, God, I've got to be a juror." He said, "He made it fun. He made jokes with them." He, and he also, he wouldn't let attorneys. He felt that, he really had a thing about attorneys and judges. He tried to make it this esoteric thing that only they could understand. He said, "No." And that's why, where he became really well-known in judicial circles was for, when he got moved up to the appellate court, the opinions he wrote were in English. You know, I don't know about you, but I've read some judicial opinions where I've gone, "Not only do I not understand what the outcome of this, I don't even understand what situation. I mean, it is so opaque." And his was just like he's talking to you, just like he writes his columns or something. And you could write, anybody can read his columns, I mean, his opinions, and go, "Oh, this is what the situation was, and this was the outcome." And of course, he also had some pretty funny lines in there, like, there was a divorce, this was after no-fault divorce was, had taken place, and this man wanted to divorce his wife of 40 years. And my husband, my father said, "Well, you know, yes, we have no-fault divorce, but a wife isn't like an old cow you put out to pasture. You still have to, if she's given you 40 years of her life, you're going to have to, and had, she's not worked during that period, because she's been doing things for you, you're going to have to support her in those pasture years and everything." So, people, there was a book made just of his opinions, just because they were, some of them were so funny. And after that, of course, he went to Samoa, where he was the chief justice of the Supreme Court of American Samoa. And that was also a great adventure. He had all sorts of friends among the Samoans, the high chiefs and talking chiefs. And, you know, my mother spent three years there and had a great time. And then, he came home and went on the bench on assignment and did that until almost 90. Even then, really didn't want to retire.
So, yeah, well, we know about his books and some of his famous books that he's written about, Bodhi Newport and all that. So, I don't know. Any last comments or things that we need to know that you haven't told us, or maybe you don't want to tell us those things?
No, I just, I would say that it's, I wish more people were interested in our history and in the transformation. I should just how huge this transformation has been, from what was a small beach community that nobody really wanted to live in particularly, I mean, it wasn't desirable, to this fabulously wealthy, famous place, and how it happened, and some of the people that made it happen. I think that it's a great story, and I'm sorry more people aren't interested.
We'd like to thank you very much. This is a great interview. You've given some very interesting and entertaining stories and had a lot to say, and so, we could probably go another hour, but...
My pleasure.